Good afternoon, thank you all for coming. Okay, um, thank you for nice crowd. Some people came as far as Oregon. So we should feel very honored. We welcome public comment and encourage community input. At the issues at hand today, agendas are available at the door. Agendas are somewhere? Okay, please understand these comment periods are a one-way communication and we cannot speak back to you and they're not a period for debate. During public comments, if you wish to give input, please come to the microphone, address the chairman, state your name, and limit your comment time to three minutes. We're striving to have a productive and efficient meeting, but to adhere to the agenda at hand.
To somebody, Nancy, do you want to tilt that speaker so it points back at the? Like churn it out the crown? Yeah, like keep like. Great, thank you. Uh, no, but it'll.
This is better? In here? Yeah? Again, that better? Is that better out there?
I'll put the sign in over there.
Nancy? We need another chair?
No.
No, she was asking for agendas.
Hi, we call this meeting to order about twelve o'clock. Um, two, um, this is a Shoto County Trusty Board meeting June twenty-fifth in Big Sandy. We will now call the meeting to order changes or additions to the minutes.
For the agenda.
To the agenda. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the minute? It's gonna be a good day. Agenda. Public comment on items on the agenda. Are there in? Okay, we're going to move into the set number three consent consent agenda, the meeting minutes, the financial minutes. We all had it ahead, so we should be able to look have looked at it, right? And then, um, could I have a, if, are there any corrections or anything from either of them? All right. If we have, okay. Is there a public comment? No, could I have a motion to to pass the meeting minutes and the financial reports?
I move, we pass the meeting minutes and the financial report.
On the second?
Last second.
Okay, is there a public comment on the meeting minutes or the financial reports? Do you have them even?
No.
Okay. Okay, well then, um, I will put it to a vote. All in favor of accepting the main minutes for the meeting and the main financial reports, say aye.
Aye.
Have I opposed? Okay. Onto the branch reports. Big Sandy? Can you hear me? Yes, or do you want to, do you want to?
Do you want me to use that every?
Yeah.
Uh, our. I think we did purple books this last month for action stroke ALS awareness, Mother's Day comics, May Day baskets are and Star Wars. Uh, we did homecoming preparation for our projects. We started out with decorating media baskets, had purple books for stroke awareness, celebrated moms with Mother's Day. We had graphic novels on display, there's spice with amongst garlic. And we colored the library for summer reading and gathered in preparation for homecoming.
And as you can see in the window out there, since I wasn't cheerleader, there's a whole bunch of cheerleader pictures out there. Is yours, huh? Is yours? Mine's in there somewhere. Yep, yep. Okay, for Benton.
Um, for the month of May, um, themes or displays in the Fort Ben Library included Mother's Day, Grandma's, Asian America, American and Pacific Islanders Month, frogs, bicycles, flowers, Jewish American heritage, mental health awareness, and catch the reading bug and the armed forces. Um, projects included hosting the Federation Pathfinder meeting with libraries from around our region. We had a garden party on a Saturday to help spruce up the grounds, take out some weeds, things like that, and then our summer reading preparations.
And you have summer celebration.
And then, and yep, and that's in June, we've been getting ready for summer celebration.
Okay, Geraldine.
So she is not on, um, yet, but their themes were Mother's Day, spring, flowers, gardening, and new books. For the Democracy Project, they were finishing up completely, they're done, they installed a new little free library in the park. They purchased books for inside of it and purchased a bench for in front of the library. They celebrated finishing their project with ice cream from Milk and Honey. Um, she did send an email from Jenny Bevill, who is the coordinator of um, the Democracy Project. For anybody who who doesn't know, the Democracy Project is um, put on by Humanities Montana, and it is geared towards teens, thirteen to nineteen, they have to be teens, it's not just middle school. And the teens come into the library and discuss um, democracy and how government works and things, and then they pick a project with their community, and it is all team-driven. Um, the librarian can't tell them what to do. They come up with those projects on their own. So Sammy Jo's been working on that. They got some feedback from that, they did a survey, so I wanted to read some of those. I think that's what she wanted to share during her report, but um, which of the following skills did you learn or improve? Um, included deeper understanding of how to make an impact as a citizen, teamwork and collaboration, feeling more connected to my library. Um, biggest struggles included having time to do it because people were in sports. Um, biggest success included coming up with a project and finding the rest of the team. Um, question was how has participating in the Democracy Project supported your growth as a person or citizen? And and the person said it has supported my growth because it makes me want to read more and I don't like reading. Uh, what role has your library and librarian played in your growth? Answer, my library has played a role in my growth by showing me the magic of finding a good book and giving me ideas of what books to put in the free library. My librarian has played a role in my growth by finding me wonderful books and helping me with my Democracy Project. She is my biggest supporter and I really appreciate her. Um, what would you say to teens thinking about joining the Democracy Project? I would say that it's a blast and a wonderful journey, but make sure you have your ideas picked out ahead of time and that you plan ahead, especially with sports. Um, what is your advice to librarians about how to engage teens? My advice to the librarians would be to also be positive and have a smile and open us with big arms. It makes us want to come in more because we like to see you and want to read to be able to tell you about the book you recommended us. Um, and so more like that. So I have some other comments, but um, oh, okay, sorry, um, which we can share, but I would recommend reaching out to Sammy Jo directly and Geraldine. Um, it was really great to watch it unfold. Um, and she got her summer reading ready in May and the lunch program. Oh, well, what I wanted to say was it's been, um, six months since the school board voted to dissolve that contract. So I did include stats to finish up the fiscal year, um, but I will no longer be reporting those. Check out stats on the reports. Yeah. So inventory update, I did a little update last time. Um, Fort Ben and Geraldine are completely finished with the inventory project. Big Sandy will be finished up by next Friday. We just have to mark some missing items and kind of track some stuff down, but that has gone well. And then, um, the only real other thing I have is one of my director work project goals um, that came out of my evaluation. Um, the three main goals were build personal communication skills and strategies for organization leadership, learn team building strategies to improve staff cohesion and morale, and focus on personal development. So under that, I had chosen, I had chosen the Brené Brown book Dare to Lead to read, so I listened to that and then have been going through. Um, my biggest takeaway from that book is her, and it's a, it's a, one of the chapter names and a quote is clear is kind and unclear is unkind, is unkind. And so not a quote out of the book, not getting clear with a colleague about your expectations because it feels too hard, yet holding them accountable or blaming them for not delivering is unkind. Talking about people rather than to them is unkind. So I've been working on that. Um, tough conversations are okay. Um, big feelings are okay, but making sure to communicate. Everybody has a lot going on these days, so people are tired and stressed out. There's just a lot. And so to be able to connect with people, lots of passion and different opinions and ideas. Um, so another quote, I appreciate the passion around these different opinions and ideas. The emotion is okay, passive-aggressive comments and put downs are not okay. Um, another quote, remember, we can't do our jobs when we own other people's emotions or take responsibility for them as a way to control the related behaviors for one simple reason. Other people's emotions are not our jobs. We can't both serve people and try to control their feelings. Daring leadership is ultimately about serving other people, not ourselves. Um, and some about um, Brené called it foreboding joy. So you have successes and you have positive things that happen, but it can be hard to feel like you can celebrate those things because you're worried what is going to come out on the other side. Um, as a takeaway on the whole book, I, it was good to read. I feel there are a lot of things that I'm doing well, and there are some things that I've recognized that I do need to work on personally. Um, but even one of the comments was even the best leaders in the world, including Brené Brown, like you're not every single person in the world is not going to like you or be able to work with you. And that's can be frustrating and hard, but it's the reality of the situation, so. Um, I would like to recommend it to the board. It's really a great book about leadership. It is available on Libby. There is a waitlist. I think they have like ten copies of it though, which on Libby, which is very unusual for the offerings because normally there's only one or two of each book, so. Um, but I had to wait a couple of weeks and then anyway, so I would recommend it to everyone. So, and then I will report out again in August with my next thing we had agreed to every other month.
Thank you.
And then that's what I have.
That's really good stuff, you said.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So I, yeah, I can, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Moving ahead to announcements, dates, the summer celebration this weekend in Fort Ben.
So the book sale, so we're having our book sale, that's why it's on there, yep.
All right, and then all branches are closed on the Fourth of July. Any, let's see, moving on to unfinished business, policy review. First one, we have organizational structure and it is an action item, so we can vote on it if everyone is agree. And I don't.
Would you like me to read it out loud?
Would you?
It's fairly brief. So organs organizational structure currently reads, the Shoto County Libraries function under the direction of the Shoto County Library Board of Trustees who are appointed by the Shoto County Commissioners. The Montana State Library in Helena, Montana, serves as a valuable resource in guiding public libraries throughout the state. The Montana State Library Commission, appointed by the governor, employs the state librarian.
Oh. Could I have a motion to accept this organizational structure policy?
I move to accept the organizational structure policy as it reads.
Second? I'll second. Okay, we have public comment, public, public comment on the organizational structure that she just read. Anything? Right. We will put it to a vote. All in favor of accepting the organizational structure as written by Emily, say aye please.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey. Cooperation, now this one.
It's just for discussion. I could read this. It's also very brief. So cooperation with other libraries, this is just for discussion today, um, to give the public an opportunity to know that it's there and to look at it should be on our website. Um, the Shoto County Library System participates in activities sponsored by the Pathfinder Federation, the Montana Library Association, the Montana Shared Catalog, the Montana State Library. The libraries work with the librarians in the Shoto County Public Schools and the Shwindon Library at the Montana Agricultural Center, referring patrons and sharing materials. Working together with other libraries through the interlibrary loan and resource sharing provides advantages for the patron and the taxpayer as well. And that was last approved August twenty-third of twenty twenty-three.
May I have a motion?
Well, it's just to put it out there.
Any comments from? Just for?
Yep.
Thank ladies.
Is it still accurate?
I think it's good. Yeah, I think it's good.
Is that still accurate on the language?
So would you?
And so we do we look at it every three years?
It needs to be once, at least once every three years. So I started at the top of the list and we're going through. So some of them, it was first approved when I was director on October twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two, and then we, I believe, removed the ALA from the list. So then that's why it was, um, looked at in August of twenty-three. So would you like me to add it as an action item for next month's meeting?
Yes, please, ma'am. Yeah, because I think it's fine.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody? All right, moving on to, uh, capital improvement plan, and I will turn that over to the rest because, no?
Oh, the one for the.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
You have it, right?
I think it's in our pocket.
Yes.
It's on the back page of the agreement.
Oh, Kim and I just did a brief, um, email in regards to it. It has not changed at all. We felt that it's can you not hear me? I'm sorry. Excuse me about that. Um, Kim and I had a brief email just to discuss if we thought we needed to meet to look into this anymore, and we think it covers basically what the Fort Ben Branch is looking for and, um, what would be most beneficial at this time. So, um, we're turning it back to the board for a vote to see if we can approve it.
And just so the audience knows, it's just capital improvements for the Fort Ben Branch. We currently don't have a plan on how to move forward improving, for example, bathroom remodel is on here. So we're just approving a list of desired repairs for Fort Ben.
Okay, I have it. I may have a, may I have a vote to accept the capital plan as written?
I'll make a motion to accept the plan.
Second?
I'll stick in.
All right, is there public discussion, public discussion, please? All right. Hmm, could I have a motion to accept?
Can I do that?
Okay, can we vote? Let's see, may we have a vote on the capital improvement plan? All in favor, say, I'm sorry. I had too much homecoming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the MOU with Library Foundation, now that's a discussion.
So you all have a copy of the uh, memorandum of understanding that I am hoping to um, get to the foundation members if we all think it looks okay at this point. It's based off of other examples in memorandum of understandings between boards and foundations around the state. And it's basically giving the foundation the ability to move forward with what we just approved in the capital improvement plan and how they can fit. And then it gives them the ability to turn back to us with any questions or need for help if they require that. But it's basically giving the foundation the okay to move ahead with the capital. This is just a discussion. There's no voting on it. And we can look over it for next month too, if we need to, but hoping to have that approved by.
So there is a foundation meeting next month? Which the trustees do meet before the, right before, but it's.
Any discussion? Okay, we will, um, oh, may I have a motion to, no.
Sorry. It's just if there's anything you maybe see that need to be improved upon in that or anything you want added, I'm happy to change it however you see fit.
Would you like me to add that for next month's agenda also?
I think so. I, I, do you think we should also, uh, send this ahead to the foundation so that they can have a look at it too because?
Before we vote?
Mm-hmm. Um, not necessarily before we vote, because I think.
Ready for next meeting?
Yeah.
To vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so, unless anybody sees anything they want changed.
We get us, we could mail those ahead to them.
Yeah, I could, I could email it to them.
Okay, all right.
If everybody's okay with that on the board.
Is that fine?
Yes.
Because it kind of goes together, doesn't it?
That's right.
All right, any thoughts, ladies? All right, we're moving on to air purifier. I will give that over to you, Emily, because I don't know that it's just on there.
Um, so last year.
That agreement by or you know, authorize the foundation?
Yeah.
Um, or authorize me to. So the short story is we applied for a grant by air purifiers, and that all kind of spun out of COVID era concerns. But we didn't get that grant, but we still think.
The full amount, we didn't get the full.
Right, we didn't get enough to pay for the air purifiers. We still consider that a good addition to each library branch to have air purifiers on site. So we are considering sending that to the foundation.
Well, no, the foundation asked, okay, I'll do it.
Uh-huh. I should say, so the foundation is a dedicated organization, so when you donate money to the library, it stays with the letter grade. A lot of Shoto County organizations have it, the fairgrounds have a foundation. If you don't have a foundation, any donations go into the county general fund. So when we talk about the foundation, that's kind of the body that holds our funding to purchase some of these items. Currently, we're considering an air purifier for each branch.
Right, so we, in the grant to the Lippard Clay Witter last year, up, applied for enough money to cover air purifiers for each of the libraries. And the funding that came back was only enough really to buy one at this time. And so in, at the April foundation meeting, the foundation, I can read it out of the minutes, um. So unfinished business, Lippard Clay Witter leftover funding, try to buy at least one air purifier now and ask for more funding in the future. Hibble moves to authorize Wix to purchase air, an air purifier with the remaining funds and to and to place, however many we can get in branches as necessary with trustee approval. So that was where that came from, Bronick second, tid, motion carried. So as, um, director, because it's not a physical change to the building, it's not like it has to be wired into a window or bolted to a floor or anything, and so.
And and part of that is in an effort to be good stewards in our grant funds, we try to spend it.
On what we asked for it, yeah.
So since we have leftover funds, what do we do with it? The foundation approved purchasing air purifiers, but we have to get clearance from the trustees first, so. I believe that's the idea, does the board trustees approve purchasing air purifiers?
More for a discussion.
When is the leftover amount? I don't know.
So I don't have the exact amount.
Okay, we'll be voting on it next week?
Yeah, next month, yeah.
Okay.
Which we can have that amount for you at the next.
I think they were almost.
The ones that were from this, like, they got it at a variety of the schools, I think.
There might be six thousand dollars for all three branches?
Well, there was five, I think, is what got approved, but we bought that book finder. So I want to say it's around three thousand.
I think they applied for close to ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But yeah, five, I think all the air purifiers would be almost six thousand dollars, so that would cover all three branches. And there's size for, I think, Fort Benton C upstairs.
Mm-hmm.
Big Sandy's, the entire building, and the same with Geraldine.
Um, and then the other thing that has come up since, you know, so there were a lot of the schools got the air purifiers during COVID. Um, and then one thing now that a lot of Montana is facing is wildfire season and smoke. And so I've been working with the state library and with the EPA, there's an EPA, um, part of their organization that works with libraries to, um, help libraries become clean air stations, very much like in very hot climates, here they have cooling, cooling centers, so then it would be a clean air center, so I've been working with that. So air purification is not simply just about COVID. It's not that anymore, um, from what we have going on now, so.
There's actually really good, um, continuing at on Montana State Library. Two page, yeah. If you wanted to look for more information.
So that will be ready for action item next?
Next.
Next one? Hey, thank you. Um, job, job descriptions, probably you, thank you Emily for, um, the large bunch of job description and.
Um, would you like some background on that?
Oh, because ours were. Oh my, oops.
Right, right.
Maybe just on one or something, just.
Well, no, just the, how I, the process to get to them.
Yeah.
So at the April meeting in Geraldine, job descriptions were discussed, and I was directed to uh, work on our job descriptions for all of the employees. I started the process by contacting the clerk and recorder to see what there was on record for jobs, county jobs in Shoto County specifically, so I could try to follow the form of what was given there. I was told that they follow Mako, Montana Association of Counties, they follow Mako job descriptions. So I reached out to Mako to get the, if they had any for libraries. So they had two job descriptions, one is for library director and one is for librarian. So I started working with that. And as I was going through that, I was trying to think of other, trying to think of other counties in the state that also are similar to our structure and I was driving back from Missoula after Memorial Day weekend, and I went through Lincoln, the city of Lincoln, and stopped at their branch library and realized that Lewis and Clark County, based in Helena, has branches in Augusta, Lincoln, and East Helena. So I reached out to John Finn, the director of the Lewis and Clark County Library, and asked him to send some job descriptions because they have branch managers, like, we have branch managers and some different things like that. So he was very generous and sent those to me. So then I sat down with those job descriptions plus what Mako had on file. Um, in addition to notes that employees had sent to me, what we have had over the years at Fort Benton. And, um, kind of as we're moving forward in time, um, what that looks like, so um, the ones from Lewis and Clark County very much followed with what Mako had, but in simplified language. Um, but in simplified language. So I went through that, applied it to our county and our positions that we had, so. So as the board looks at these, um, the top part, um, department reports to all of that is what we already had, the things that are in italics is directly off the Mako paperwork. Um, so Mako's is reviewed by HR and legal, and the Lewis and Clark County ones were also reviewed, um, by an HR firm. Um, so Mako's is reviewed by HR and legal and the Lewis and Clark County ones were also reviewed um by an HR firm. Um, working in overview, job summary, essential functions. So those that first basically page is what Mako recommends to have in the job description, so that's similar on all of those. Um, and then it gets into. Essential functions, um duties and responsibilities. Through that, physical demands and working conditions, supervision, exercise, knowledge, skills and abilities qualifications. And then another addition is that signature page. That people have read and understood them, so that's the. That's the process that I got to this document versus what we had before, and much like I said in that book. One of my biggest takeaways is clear is kind, and so I, yeah, it's Janet is correct, they are much longer than they were before. Um, but then that will hopefully add. Um, clarification. Um, and points to discuss. So thank you for your patience, I thought it was not going to take as long as it did, but then as I got deeper into it and realized that there was more. Um, to do it, just took a bit longer to get them all. Um, put together and in similar layout and structure.
Thank you, that explains it, because like.
Right, yeah.
Also. As I understand, the point of these from the county perspective is one, when they advertise the job. They have a little bit description of what you're being hired for, right, and the other part is part of the onboarding, that's the reason for the signature page? But when someone gets hired, you go through it, is that your understanding Emily?
Right.
Okay.
And then it's that. Um, can't come back and say, well, you never told me this, it's based on that. Which and then it should make evaluations clearer and more straightforward also. Um, and then, did you watch, you watched the Zoom with Chris Goss or no?
Yeah.
That one about the policies?
Yeah, both of the ones that he's recently done.
Okay, um. So yeah, so it's my understanding that the director sets the job descriptions, they're not, it's not a, they're not policies per se, is what. Was my understanding.
Certainly have to act on them.
Uh, we can just be aware of that.
Vote on them, correct?
Can we, can we take them home and look for more?
Yes, I.
Small changes.
If you would.
Not have time.
Yeah, no, I, it was a lot, right, and so if you could email me, I would appreciate that. Or if you wanted to come in and we could sit and chat. Um, that would be great too.
One question is um. Prior to, in our old job descriptions, it said all librarians share in the discard and cataloging process. And I, I did notice that's not in these anymore, and I was curious on why we're moving that correction.
Um. This one, so I can make sure that I'm.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, um, the branch, yeah. Um. So it includes, um.
Sure is the collection.
Mm-hmm.
Back.
Yeah.
Potential assumptions, is that where we're going?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Um. Collaborates with the assistant director to ensure materials are rotated at the branch libraries according to the policies and procedures. Ensures the collection is relevant, current and responsive to community outreach needs and priorities. Organizes need and shelf reads according to library policies and procedures, shares in the inventory process of library materials. Um. So that.
But does that mean that they'll be able to do that cataloging and discarding or they always have to go through or?
Um, so that is one of the things when I was talking to John Finn was. Um. Which I understand Helena is a bigger city, um, but there. And I also talked to Lincoln County, which is similar to our size, um. But they have one person that does that cataloging and additions, it's, it's one position and then. The branch managers communicate with that position to make sure that.
Sure.
Which we currently, we have that shared Google document, they can add titles, both br- both um branches. And work through that.
And then my other question, then we'll just, our job descriptions, that was your position and not existing director, so why is that changing?
Actually, the ca- the cataloging piece or the selection piece?
Selection piece.
Um, so that is more of it, we have moved to collaboration on that because it's a lot, we have such a large collection, so working together. So it is a whole team, that um chain of command or structure is um. Branch managers take their. Requests and what they are getting from their community members to the assistant director and then we discuss it to make sure that we're. Trying to get a well-balanced collection.
And how do you feel like that's going?
Um. It's been rough. It's been a rough go with that, and so um that's one of the things that um. I'm hoping to be working on with this professional growth, my own professional growth plan is to work on that communication piece.
I wonder if taking it away from the branches is. Making that more difficult or if. That's my, I'm just curious.
Yeah, um, actually, so Nancy had brought back. She brought back this binder that she had, might be dating her a bit, um, and so I was looking through that too. It was sure, yeah, and so I found, so this was from two thousand and seven, it was revised in, in, in oh seven. Um, under the assistant librarian position, the first duty and responsibility was overseas cataloging and processing of new books. So that's not, it's not something maybe in the most recent. Iteration has been a bit different, but historically has been like that, so, and I know it's been different, um.
Well, and some of the.
Under different directors.
Some of the discussion Chris Goss talked about is there's, it sounds like there's a significant amount of documentation for purchasing books. So when a challenge comes up, but also when a challenge comes up, you can say this is why this was removed. And I wonder if it goes both ends, like at this point, there is. Further requirements for discarding, like is there documentation as to why things are discarded versus, you know, it's torn, it's out of date? Or is that mostly for purchasing?
Um, no, it's, it should be both ways, and then there's that as stewards of community or of county. Financials to make sure that it's all coming through one.
So what is the? Are you ever, will that ever be changed so they can have the, their powers back?
I can't speak to that right in this exact moment in time.
Is that, I would like to see that. Okay.
Does each library get to choose what books they want, or do you choose what books they want?
Um, so right now, we have a shared Google document that um Darlene and Sarah add. If they think a book should be added to library or patrons come in and ask for a book, then they add that to that list and we do our best to make sure we are. Getting as much as we can, also within the guidelines of trying to keep a. Um, like a balanced, well-rounded collection too. But getting what's popular and.
Are there still supply chain issues?
And there is some of, yeah, supply chain, we can order books. Uh, but they don't always necessarily come at the same time, if that makes sense. Or being able to get them at all sometimes, so. Another comment?
Uh, so. Oh, sorry.
Yes, I am working right now with the twenty twenty-three MSL trustee handbook. And it says here that the personnel management sets generally to board has authority outlined. By MCA twenty-two dash one through ten.
Is it on, Janet?
Is it on? Okay, can you? Can you, you have a quiet voice?
I have a quiet voice too, can you?
Okay, so. And I'm just looking about, and so I will be looking at it too. But Emily, it does say on our trustee handbook. That the personnel management is generally a board decision outlined by MCA. Twenty-two dash one, three. So and that is probably the trustee handbook, now I haven't looked at the new one. But that is what it says in our trustee handbook.
So are you? So in an email you sent me. Um, Janet, you wrote the library director, the director is the chief executive officer of the library. Their responsibility typically includes, um, one of the points was hiring and supervising staff, is that what you're referring to? I, I know, I'm trying to understand what you're referring to though, personnel management is that?
Well, it would seem that. We would policy. If we are supposed to be managing it through MCA twenty-two dash one dash.
Yeah, that was not my understanding from the Chris Goss um video.
I actually didn't get what you said from it, Emily, but it does say on page fifteen that we, we do write. Um. Prescribe the duties of the library staff, and that's of our old one, and I can't, I don't, I haven't looked at the new one either.
Okay.
Um, so we do have something to say about the job duties, is what I think Janet is trying to say.
Um, so Cory just sent. MCA twenty-two one three, is that what you're reading from?
Yes.
Could we be dealing with our argument of, is it a policy or procedure?
Policy, I just think we have, like we're doing here, we're talking about it, we have an ability to change it and.
Yes.
See, do what we think is best with it. Is what you're trying to say, Janet?
And what's interesting, MCA means Montana Code Anated, and it actually is a law. And this one, and they'll show you how many years this one came in in nineteen forty-seven, it came in in nineteen fifty-seven. And it actually is from the state of Montana. So we generally go by whatever the state of Montana puts in law. And this one's under twenty-two libraries. And right three, three public libraries.
So you would like the job descriptions as an action item or a discussion next in July?
Any others, any other discussion on this?
Well, I would think if we're all going to send email input. Would it be fair for Emily to just bring a compilation of the changes we request, because I don't think it's legal for us to. All talk in a thread chain, so I think, yeah, you could just, you could just bring all the changes that are requested and that'll be a long discussion.
Hearing this, we will. Email with the changes that we feel and then talk about them, well, talk about them or.
I guess we could just bring it to the meeting too.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Hey. Just a comment, so um. A lot of parents and other people, just patrons of the library, and I, we have such a small budget, at least here for Big Sandy. So one of our concerns is, I have certainly added to the Google document and I have received some um titles that I've requested. But it's so tricky because we've also gotten a lot of books that we didn't request and that really. Kind of fell short of what we were looking for, either as parents or as adults, I know that there's a lot of adults waiting for those Nora Roberts books and, and you know, waiting for their new. Titles that they like really want to read, and so with our small budget, we just want, you know, the most out of it and. The ones that know that better are Sarah and Darlene that are constantly getting the, I, I think me in particular, I bug them about, you know, did you get the Tattle Twins? Did you get this, did you get, you know, I have so many requests and it's not just me, it's just, you know, like the other adults here and other parents and. I think it would make it easier because, you know, it's, it's like the Google document that we gotta wait for, you know, the assistant. But it, and then there's a, for me in particular, I just keep booking my librarians because then there's nothing, like I don't hear back. Like, I don't know if it was purchased, I don't know if it was, it's a limbo, if it's, you know, if there's a problem with. Um, you know, finding it, right, because they, there's cer- they buy from certain, you know, I, I don't remember, it was like not Amazon and. It has to be find it, I understand all that, but sometimes they don't know and then it's just a frustration. Because then I keep booking them and they don't know the answer because there's that lack of communication. So I was just thinking, it would make it a little easier, you know. We use patrons to go to our librarians and then they could say, well, I didn't find it here, or, you know, just kind of stop them.
Or some communication about the process of this is on order, this is.
You know, we couldn't find it, we, you know, what, whatever it is, but yeah.
Yes, Kimmy.
Um, the other piece of that is that um. If we donate items to our library, it would be nice that they could catalog them right here and they would stay in the library. Rather, and you know, if there's duplicates, yes, we go, they do something else with those. But it would be nice that the items that we personally donate to the library would have the first chance to stay here. Rather than. Not getting back.
They do, don't they?
No, no.
They don't. And they um. It was a little, yes, there's been a little controversy, and I, and I personally would like to see that. Be lead to a resolved or whatever.
Right, I know sometimes the items, I know sometimes the items are transported to Fort Benton for label application and things like that.
Sometimes they don't come back.
Okay.
Hi, this is Sissy Felton, Emily, can you speak to this since you're in charge of that whole process?
So our general gift policy is that gifts given in any. Way, shape or form to the library are gifts. And a gift with the understanding that it's once you give a gift, it's no longer. We don't, the policy is that not every single thing that is donated to the library is put in the library system. But we get.
Do you ever take Big Sandy donations and put them in other branches rather than?
Sometimes, yeah, we look at the overall collection. And make decisions based on overall collection development and management. Um, we, we in Fort Benton get hundreds of books donated. Some of which make it into our collection, some of which come to Big Sandy, some of which go to Geraldine. Some that don't get added to the collection at all. Um.
I know you recently.
There's a lot.
You recently talked to a patron, you want to walk us through like some of those donations, where they went and what the reasoning was?
In Fort Benton?
No, I think there was a donation here in Big Sandy.
Okay.
As long as we're putting to the Big Sandy collection, some were not.
Some of it is also based on um, it's called original cataloging, if there's not a record in the system. Then. It's not added, a lot of the time self-published or smaller publications don't have that record. There are, I believe at this time, three original catalogers in the state of Montana doing that work, it is a multi-year degree with. Um, a lot of, like an internship and study that way, it's not. You just don't put a barcode on a book to put it into circulation. So when patrons come in to the Fort Benton Library, bring in a box of books, I had yesterday, I had two people brought in. Seven books, I think some of them did end up coming up here with me today. Um. And some stayed in Fort Benton, so that's. That was, I guess, I don't know, yes.
What's the criteria to decide if it's ethical or not?
Yeah, um, a lot of it is based on if it's got that original record. Because we get some things that don't have the original record. And then just depends on where, we are trying right now. Um, a new, uh, not new author, but newly popular it seems is Freedom McFadden. So I've had a number of patrons come in in the last couple of weeks asking for Freedom McFadden books, so I've been looking that up. So we've got a couple in Fort Benton and there's, I think we have two or three in Fort Benton, and I think there's three here and two in Geraldine. And so one of the things that we've been working on is um gathering those kinds of collections into one place and then if a big, if a big Sandy patron is interested. In um Freedom McFadden, we can have all those books. We can bring them here, that's the beauty of the system, is that um we can, we share those resources. Um, but to have them spread out is not necessarily. Uh, but to have them spread out is not necessarily the, most efficient way. So some of it is based on that also.
So if you have newly popular books, how do you, if there's no catalog record, I don't fully understand the library cataloging and all of that. But if you have new stuff that's hitting and people are wanting it, and you, there's no record system, or how do you, how do you start getting some of this stuff that people are wanting?
So Freedom McFadden probably isn't needing original cataloging. I think what she's saying is say that there's an eight-book series, rather than have two to three books in each branch. They're thinking about having the entire eight-book series in one branch.
Right, I understood that. I just meant like when you're trying to decide what books to keep from the donations. And if you can't have that record of, you know, if there's new.
Yes.
Like, how, how do you go about doing that? You just don't get those books because?
Or we keep them until there is a record made. There was one.
Who makes the record?
There, like I said, there, I think, I believe there are two to three original catalogers at this point, um, in the state.
So they're like coming through those and making those records for.
Mm-hmm, so we had one that came, uh, by an author and someone out of Geraldine. And somebody donated the book, and then you put in a request for that to be created, and then we have to wait on that end for.
So you could put requests.
Yeah, and we do, yeah.
Okay, so you could keep any book that's donated potentially, you might have to wait to get it cataloged.
Right, and usually for those, it's very much, um, local author, author in history.
Do any libraries do the, like the little free library, do a kind of off-the-books? Section, which, you know, you can keep track of them, you can check them in and check them out, but you could have them in the library. Is that possibly something Big Sandy would be interested in to keep those books?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that way you could keep them here instead of waiting for the bureaucracy to grind away.
So if somebody donates, we could keep them here and not?
Right.
Right, have them in the system waiting.
Yep.
So our gift policy does say, all gifts such as books, magazines, pamphlets, audio, CDs, DVDs, information, are accepted with the understanding that the acquisition library director and/or the board of trustees may use their discretion as to bear use and disposal. And that is our gift policy. And that was approved in December seventh, twenty twenty-two.
So I need some clarification. Janet, are you asking, so out of the two hundred books that I received at the Fort Benton Library as donations last week, does the board want to see all of those lists?
No, it's just saying that we.
Right.
We can use the discretion.
Right.
The way I assumed it was the library or the director, but it also is the board of trustees can use their discretion.
Okay.
I think there's only.
Yes.
I just, this is my first meeting, would you stand up?
Would you stand up?
Thank you, honey.
So right now, I didn't, I don't know the job policies or what she put together, but, so right now as it is, our library, she, because of her position right now, she gets to decide kind of what books come in here, right? You're trying to get a balanced library for us here, that's what your job is.
On her end.
On her end right now. So I was just thinking, and it's simply just a suggestion, maybe somewhere within the job descriptions or policies or whatever. Um, because if she leaves and someone else comes in, her, the next person's idea of what's best for our library is going to change as well. And so like there's this constant flow of, oh, well, this is better for this library, this is better, this is better for this library. Maybe there's a way that you guys could, and I don't know what it is, I'm just throwing an idea out there of figuring out how to put it back in the libraries, yeah, so that it's not constantly shifting. Like, I guess what Judy said of, hey, this is what this town wants, and this is what we live for, and this is what we're seeking. And so, not that we don't want balance, but I think they do, as somebody who loves to read, I was quite grumpy at the monopoly idea, cause I'm like, oh, you're making me read things I don't want to read. But they're forcing you to do that here, whereas that's a balance, I mean, like that, they're forcing me to go out and kind of do that stuff. But I also know I want these authors, and this is who I go to, and this is what my kids like, excuse me, and not that her job isn't helpful in that of like making sure we're balanced, but it will constantly be changing if you're changing that position all the time. So then books are going to come, books are going to go, or this is what's going to be appropriate at this time, and this is not. Whereas if you kept it in the community and what Geraldine likes, and the Geraldine branch person knows that, Geraldine can keep those things there while having a balance, or Fort Benton can do the same thing. I don't know how that looks, it was just kind of that concept of within the job description, maybe figure out how, or whatever that looks like, to try and figure out how, hey, we can have communication with her. But also like, hey, if this is what Fort Benton knows that they like, and this is the group of people, we can put some balance in there and put some random stuff in there. But at the same time, this author that they want, let's bring it in, like that's what they want, let's bring that in. Or you know what, we've never had anybody read this book? Let's get, you know, like, let's.
Right.
Very balanced, but no.
And just to, an idea, but am I hearing you right, possibly it'd be good and good for the community if Emily had like office hours in the Big Sandy branch of come talk to the person who has.
That's the way to do it, yeah? This is what we want, this is what we like, we don't want this, we've never used this, those kinds of things, or maybe you give it back to the branch. I don't know, because again, if it, that would be a way to keep it from constantly shifting if you have position changes.
Yes, and have that as standard thing, that, yeah, here she goes her place.
Yeah, but also, you know, maybe if it wasn't within the branch, cause then it doesn't matter who's in the branch either. This is what we want, this is what we like.
Some direct patron would do that position.
So there is a link on our webpage to contact, you can put suggestions in that way also, or call the Fort Benton Library. And I come up, I try to come up every other week I'm here, so.
It was just one of the things that I hear, but like maybe it needs to be something that's set, so that it's not, like you said, clear is fine. So like instead of it being this big, ambiguous thing out there where figure out a way to make it clear and concise and.
Um, so Cory did put in the chat that public commenters need to identify themselves before they.
When are you IDAG, I follow the rule.
When are you in, uh, Big Sandy next?
Um, I will be here next Wednesday afternoon.
So she will be here next Wednesday afternoon. Be a good time, but yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Are we doing the three minutes also? I wasn't sure if that was happening.
We will be. Yes, sir.
Uh, I just want to introduce myself, I'm John Finn, I'm the director at Lewis and Clark Library. I just want to say, you guys have a very similar system to what we have. A central library with three branches, um, with centralized purchasing, that the ability for patrons to make requests of materials. It's a, it's a great system, it works really well, uh, for library systems. To have centralized purchasing and, uh, centralized cataloging. Emily keeps talking about there are three librarians in the state that are able to catalog. My wife is one of them actually, at the Storil Society. So I know that it's really difficult for, um, locally produced materials to have an original catalog record. Somebody who self-publishs a book, that book is not going to have, uh, an original catalog record. But anything that is widely available, um, things on Amazon, things that, uh, are published by a major publisher, they're all going to have catalog records that you can easily attach your holdings to. But it's the smaller presses, the, the self-published things that are, are more difficult. I just want to say, Emily is a librarian, and, uh, Choto County is very lucky to have a decreed librarian, um, at the helm. And I commend you guys for hiring and, uh, keeping her here. And I'm, I'm available to answer any questions. If you ever want to talk about centralized services, we'd love to have you visit, uh, Lewis and Clark Library. We, we have a courier run where we take materials from Central Library up to Augusta and Lincoln every week. We go to East Helena twice a week, uh, we have book drops all over the county, we have a bookmobile. We have all kinds of services that, um, serve everybody in the community, everybody in the county. And I think that's what is trying to happen here, which I think is a great thing.
Do you find your system also has conflicts between like, cause I imagine Augusta is very different from Lincoln, very different from. Helen, do you also see that there's this conflict between having a central collections development and?
Collaboration between the Augusta librarian, and she knows her community, so she's able to make. I have to say, we have a much bigger, uh, collection budget than Choto County. I mean, we're spending four hundred dollars a year just on books that we share throughout the county. So we're more likely to purchase things that are requested, um, but limited budgets really handcuff smaller libraries. And, um, if there's a single copy, I'm sure that folks here can request that copy and it gets delivered up here. We have a lot of things at Helena that are, of course, are not at Augusta or Link, but, but patrons there can always request that material and it gets sent up by them here. Everybody has a, a voice in, in the smaller communities.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Any other comments on this subject?
It is.
Could you, and could you? Yeah, and could you identify yourself, please?
Graham, good thing, is the, I don't totally understand, but cataloging, is something catalogued even if it's not in libraries? Like, is there a way, like, hypothetically, if I was to spend hundreds and donate, like the Tuttle Twins, is there a way to know that it's catalogued somewhere before I donate, so then it's not tucked away somewhere for a while? Make sense?
Yes, I think there's three to four different types of cataloging, cause there's original cataloging, there's just the cataloging that Emily and Maryn do. But I think there is a struggle, um, I've seen some super weird books come through the donation piles. But I think all libraries have to be pretty upfront about like, we can't accept everything. Like I, you know, I remember there's a book in the book sale where I was like, holy, that's a lot of swearing, it's, it's a lot.
Right.
So.
It's just one that people want, but it's hard to get, and so then somebody just wants to donate. It's, so you can't find out if it's already cataloged.
I think if you wanted to call and ask Emily, um, cause she would absolutely know if it's already in the system.
Okay, so then, cause I, I would just hate to spend a lot of money to donate something.
Absolutely.
For it to just disappear if it's not cataloged, cause I understand that that takes a long time, so if I could back that to that, and then just do a donation that people want, but it's hard to get.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Brandon Javie. So I donated a bunch of books to this library, and I thought that's where they were going to stay. And I, you know, I did that, I'm, I'm, I think it was like eighty books or something that I happened to bring home one, one summer when I was here visiting. And I, I guess I wasn't clear on how the cataloging and all of that stuff worked. So my intent was to make sure that they stayed here at the Big Sandy Libraries, cause I'm from Big Sandy, but, so.
Thank you. Yes.
Michelle Danrther, I have a question on the free library concept. So when books are donated like here, and they're not catalogued, quite frankly, anybody can just take them and the library never sees them again, right? Is that correct?
Does that not work, sir?
So it seems like if you donate something and you want it to be in dispersal and come back, and there's some rules regarding late fees and that sort of stuff, it has to go through the catalog.
So we are, I want to make sure, we are a fine free library for books though, so there's no overdue fees. But if a book is lost and not returned, it is charged for that.
Even in the.
No, no, just in the catalog, with the catalog, with the barcoded books, yes.
If somebody donated it.
Right.
Didn't go through cataloguing, cause they want it to stay in Big Sandy, it could technically be taken off these shelves and never seen again, nobody's going to know.
Right.
That's fine.
But according to our gift policies, they can be donated, they can be donated with understanding that the library director and/or the board of trustees can use their discretion as for the version disposal.
There's a question.
Well, I was just going to answer your question, Michelle, like sometimes when people donate Big Sandy books, and it's not available to be in the catalog, like we can look that up and see if it's already catalogued. But if it's not, we have a special section that cannot leave the library, so it stays here.
Good idea.
So if those books disappear, but they're still checked out, you still know who is checking out?
Well, they don't get checked out, like they can't leave the library.
Highest and staying.
Questions?
I know this is a unanswered, but I can't remember what was said, just on the same subject that I was saying, if it's, if I know it's catalogued and I get something that everybody wants, it could still get borrowed by their libraries, right? Or does it just stay here if it's catalogued and in the library?
So our, our system is a whole system, so even if it's catalogued to Big Sandy, it can be checked out by other.
Borrowed by other, it doesn't just.
But then it should come its way back.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if the Tuttle Twins, like if someone in Geraldine, or if I requested it, then after the checking period, it would be returned to the Big Sandy branch.
Um, and normally there's a four-month, like if something comes, not by, based on publication date, but based on acquisition date, like when it actually gets to a library, say if something was published in twenty twenty-four, but then we didn't get it until into twenty twenty-five, when the library receives it, it stays in that particular building for four months before it's taken to the different branches, and for interlibrary loan that we are also part of, that's to any library in the state. Um, we don't send out anything that's, um, less than a year old into our library. So we're not going to send the newest Baldacci book to Stanford tomorrow, until after it's been in our circulation for a year.
I have kind of a question, can I, Council?
Do you stand up for me, please?
Okay. If I donate a hundred dollars to the Big Sandy Library, does it go through the Fort Benton Library?
So how it works?
How much of Big Sandy gets that hundred dollars?
So if you make a donation to the Choto County Library Foundation for the Big Sandy Library, for book purchases, books are purchased for Big Sandy to be catalogued in Big Sandy with that money. Oftentimes, what I have seen since I have started is a lot of money is donated, um, in memorial funds. And so that, um, for example, the Bits family, um, when she passed away, the Bits family came to the library and said that they wanted it spent on like adult fiction for the Big Sandy Library. So within that framework, um, books have been ordered with that money for the Big Sandy Library based on what their, what that request was from the family. Um, you can say with which branch, like you can leave it that broad. If it's just for purchase for books for the Big Sandy Library, you can do it that way. If you want it to be, um, some of the most expensive books to purchase are juvenile children's nonfiction books. So if you want your money to go to juvenile nonfiction, then we earmark it that way, so juvenile nonfiction books for the Big Sandy Branch Library.
And I, I would say to write something in the memo is helpful, cause the foundation is separate from the library. So I believe our treasurer gets a stack of checks.
Right.
And if it's in the memo, Big Sandy Branch, all those funds are tracked separately.
Right.
In our, in our bank account, so we know exactly how much is donated, but we don't always know if it's donated to the Big Sandy Branch, if there's not a note somewhere on the check for Big Sandy, for Geraldine, but that's helpful.
But all of it would stay in Big Sandy. All of your hundred dollars would go to Big Sandy.
Like if you just. And it stays here.
Right. Well, I mean, it goes, the check itself physically goes to Fort Benton, so the foundation treasurer can deposit it into the bank. But then it's trapped, she has that. I do not do that, we have a separate treasure.
Yes.
So I just carry them.
I just want to make sure it's clear too, that in your hundred dollars, unless you have a specific book requested with that money, it's still under the jurisdiction of the library director.
We try to select off the shared list is what we, yeah, I mean, like, we, we don't purchase anything for that, with that money that's not on that list.
On Big Sandy's suggestion. That's good, that would be nice to be thought of on that.
Is there a list of rules somewhere?
No.
Would you like a list of rules? Of how we do this for Big Sandy?
Yes.
Hey.
Sarah has come.
Uh, for the memorial, like with Betty Bits' memorial money, we put, when we put the books that we wanted, we put, take out of the Betty Bits Fund. So we knew how much money we had before we sent it down for the memorial money. And then when we made the list, we wanted specific books to come out of that fund. That's how we set it up to them.
That's how they communicated to me.
Back to my hypothetical question, just so in case I ever decide to do something like this, but is it ever happened that, like, if back to the Tuttle Twins, I guess, if I were to hypothetically buy it and donate it and it works out with the cataloging, if that was the word, and everything like that, is it possible that a librarian or somebody in any of the libraries that might borrow it could be like, I don't like these, so I'm gonna get rid of it? Does that ever?
No.
Wasted if somebody.
And and I should say that there is like a timeline on all this, right? If you've donated the Tuttles today, there's no guarantee it would still be in the system in twenty thirty-five. I'm not sure exactly. I think they usually try to keep things for, do you guys have like a five years, seven years, two years? As a smaller library system, our timeframes are often longer than larger systems. Best practice says that you shouldn't keep any, like, medical nonfiction books longer than one year. But we would not have any medical nonfiction, right? Because those are very expensive books. And so um, for some books, we look at a three-year checkout, some some genres, we look at a five-year checkout. And by that, you mean if it has not been checked? Right, if it has not been checked out at all for that amount of time.
There'd be like a loan thing, like, you can get it back. You know, not that I would ever want a book back after ten years, but depending on what it is, whoever donates, could they get it back, or is it just too much?
That would be a lot. Like I said, we get hundreds and hundreds of donations. And I think they're they're working with a software package to get through. Do you get through Montana or American Libraries? The. Station? No, the state library. The state library, and so it's a software package. I think it only has so many tracking abilities. And so it's got reports they can pull about when was it last checked out, things like that, but to attach a donation receipt. I don't think it has that capability.
Yes, Michelle.
One question. Does our, in particular, Big Sandy um referral list, what we want to exceed a budget?
Oh, referral lists are always going to exceed. I mean, and it's our. Um, I do not have that number right now in front of me. But she will be there on Wednesday.
This is very off the cuff. Would it be? It, I can see that you're there's confusion and you still have some questions. Would it be a good idea for you that have questions to write your questions down, compile them all just about what we're talking about right here? So we can send it on or discuss it.
So there is one um Zoom available on the Shoto County Library um YouTube channel that talks about collection management that Mary recorded a few years ago, um, twenty twenty-three, I think. So that would be a good place to start. Um, and our library number is on the website. You can call me anytime you want with any questions that you have, and I try to be here. I strive to be here every other week. I can come up more often than that if people would like. I would love to sit down with anybody who wants to sit down and have a chat with me about it. And I would say one thing, when this all kind of, all the collection stuff blew up, I think at that point I ended up sitting down and talking with Emily. And I think collection development and um the gentleman for Lewis and Clark can speak to this, but I think it's, is it a master's degree to, like, within the the library system, you know, library professionals, I think it's a quite advanced degree to handle collections. Like, it's not, you know, two or three classes, you take your sophomore year. I believe it's very advanced. Is that accurate? Yes. And so I think that's some of what we deal with is that, for me, as a layperson, I'm only aware of what I read. I'm in no way aware, you know, gardening or other things, and so I only have a very small window into the books I think should be in the library. Right, someday. Terrible at it now.
I'm gonna move on unless there's one more question. Okay, we are done with the job descriptions, introduction of a new trustee.
So the county commissioners last Monday chose Lisa Samansky from Highwood to fill um the upcoming vacancy of Nancy Grossman. I would like to thank Nancy for her many years of dedicated service to the library system in Shoto County. And thank you for all that you have done. She told me I couldn't bring her a cake, so.
We wouldn't have enough.
So Lisa uh was unable to come today. She had a doctor's appointment in Great Falls this morning, but um said she will have the meetings on her calendar, so she will be able to regularly attend those meetings. So her first meeting will be next month.
All right, we're moving on to public records request policy and some action items. You guys all have one? Could I have a motion? Since we talked about it last week, last month, could I have a motion to accept public record, public records? This one that was emailed out?
I think Janet brought it to the last meeting.
It's not enough.
Not. If you have a spare, that'd be.
Oh, that's.
I think I have it here from May meeting.
And actually, um, we went through the Montana State Library through their recommendations.
Does it match what they have?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
We did discuss it.
Yeah, we did.
I apologize, guys.
I don't have either. No, that's, no, it was wrong ones.
Do you want to read it, Jan? Or is it quite long?
It is quite long.
Okay.
Actually, it was written to make sure that the trustees of the library and the library staff themselves are providing access to information, while making sure the requests are clear and well-defined. Use my phone, please.
Sorry.
The policy was written to make sure that trustees and or the library staff are providing access to information, while making sure the requests are clear and well-defined. This way, everyone can be assured that your requests streamline the process to be specific and beneficial. And can be responded quickly and accurately. This way, the information you wish, and you have the right to know, strike.
Okay, I think my only question was, we put a charge in here, and there was some discussion that we're only allowed to charge if we are paid for our position, like, if it takes up our our time. The document.
I think that was, actually, that was the effort was going to take over two hours. Otherwise, you can ask for any information that the thing was to be specific on what information you're asking for.
I will, I will ask for a motion when we get some discussion, if that's all right? Do I need a motion to accept the public records request policy?
I move to accept the public artist's request policy second.
And then um public comment? Public comment? Public comment, please.
I just wondered if Corey could speak to that.
Right. I can read it about a page. Oh, let Corey.
I'm sorry, what would you like me to say? What? I don't have a copy of the public records that was in an um I don't have a copy of it, I don't believe.
I guess, oh, one thing that I'm curious about is number five. The very end of the document is denial. If the records are withheld, redacted, or otherwise denied, requested records, it will provide an explanation in writing. If a portion is exempt or redacted, that must be, the rest must be released. I don't know if we're really allowed, as an open meeting law, to withhold records.
It goes all the way through there, at the very beginning, it tells everything that can be withheld. If you read.
Well, it has exceptions. It has the exceptions.
Privacy, particularly privacy. I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of this, so I can't.
Well, talk about.
She's got it.
The denial section doesn't necessarily reference the exemptions or exceptions.
Yeah, well, it it is the exceptions that all the state.
I think maybe it should, it should reference that, like, it can be denied due to to the exceptions, but as it reads, it just says, if we don't give you the records, we just have to tell you why, and I don't know if that's legal.
It's not saying there, why you wouldn't get the records, okay?
Okay, should I read it?
Sure.
Okay. One, right to access. In accordance with Montana law, the public has a right to access government records under the right-to-know provisions in the Montana Constitution and the Montana Records Act Act two dash six dash one zero zero two. Montana law additionally constitutionally recognizes the right of privacy as well as various other protections against the disclosure of information. Two, exceptions. Certain types of information are exempt from public disclosure to protect protect individual privacy or other entrance. Sorry, interests. Information or the demand for individual privacy clearly exceeds the merits of public disclosure. Confidential criminal justice information. Individually identifiable health information under HIPAA. Social security or taxpayer numbers. Library records that identify a person borrowing history, except under specific circumstances such as a court order, according to the Montana Library Confidentiality Act. MCA twenty-two dash one dash eleven oh one, okay. Number three, submitting a request. A records request must be done in writing and detail the specific record requested. It shall provide a name, address, email address, telephone number, and other information necessary to fulfill the request as well as the intended use of the information. Four, fee schedule. Montana law MCA two dash six dash one zero zero six allows public agencies or individuals to charge fees for fulfilling public information requests. Single request for a specific document or specific record requiring less than an hour is no charge except the cost of printing. However, the requester must at least identify the records requested with sufficient clarity to allow them to be identified. If the Requester makes an ambiguous or broad request, or has difficulty in making a request that one cannot reasonably identify what public records are being requested, then the request will be denied. Documents or requests which are identifiable but require one to two hours to gather will have a charge of fifty dollars per request plus printing. Requests for a single clearly identifiable and readily available public records will be fulfilled within five days of the acknowledgement of the request. Any other request will be fulfilled in ninety days. Part five, denial. If the records are withheld, redacted, or otherwise denied requested records, it will provide an explanation in writing. If a portion is exempt or redacted, the rest must be released. So I guess I think number five has, maybe it has a few typos. But to me, it should reference, it should maybe say if if the records are exempt from public records request. We will, um, explanation right will be provided. Because to me, as it reads, it just says if we, you know, like I said, if the records are withheld, we will tell you why, and I don't, I don't believe that's legal under open meeting laws. I think we have to provide a lot of the records. We can't just not do it.
That is correct. Interpretation is um.
Yes.
If you go ahead, please repeat that, Corey.
Um, open meeting law, that interpretation is after it. Um, typically, library, the confidentiality records request, as Kim noted, um, is um patron records. Um, open meeting is separate, so not, I did not hear that listed out under those exceptions. So I'm I'm not sure what all I can do to clear, to clarify. When I was asked to speak to this, I'm not sure. Um, what?
Corey, are we, are we legal with saying documents or requests which are identifiable but require one to two hours to gather will have a charge of fifty dollars per request plus printing? Are, do you know if that's legal?
I would recommend talking with the county um what their policies are, um, but the board is independent, right, of um, the county, but I'm if that's what the code states, then I don't, do you have, why not?
Okay.
But, yeah, I would just check.
Okay.
Montana Code two dash six dash one thousand and six.
What about that?
That's what it says.
That's the fee schedule?
The schedule that I, that we use from the Montana State Library.
Okay, so that, that's the fee schedule from Montana.
I'm not, I'm not super familiar with that. I pull it up. I'm just letting you know. Fee schedule is not my area of expertise. Um, I did just pop it in the chat, though, but at least that um, that um, resource is available, but I could look at this more closely. But I don't know if that's the sticking point in this question and conversation.
And I understand the point of fee, I'm just worried that it's, we're not legally able to charge a fee as trustees, because we're volunteer.
But it would be towards employee time.
Okay.
Is what it's for, because she, Emily and Mary and whoever else are the ones that are making all of these copies. That's what I think is.
Is referenced.
The point of the um Yeah, it's the policy. It's not covering our time, it's covering Emily and Mary and our employees that are doing all these copies for us.
Okay.
Hello, this is Sissy Felton, and it's your labor cost, and none of your employees make fifty bucks an hour. And that's what the code says, and if you need qualifications from that, yes, the commissioners can help you with that. And Mike Monroly, also, he's the lawyer that helped write the open meeting laws. It's a good reference to talk to. But the law says it's the labor cost. So.
It is the search fee. It does not say labor cost, it says search. And under Montana Code annotated two dash six dash one thousand and two confidential information information that is accordingly confidential status from prohibited from disclosure as provided by law. The term includes information that is protected from law enforcement because an individual private interest clearly exceeds the merits related to judicial deliberations in proceedings necessary to maintain the security and integrity of secure facilities designated as confidential by statute or judicial decisions. And it also states that the records of the library, such as patrons, are also not allowed.
So maybe in that so maybe in that denial section, we can just reference MCA.
Yes.
Point two, records are withheld or redacted or otherwise denied into.
Uh, this is Sissy Felton again. Janet, can you tell me the legal attorney or something that you have discussed this with?
Yeah, excuse me, as chairman, I would like to table this and bring it back next meeting. There's too much.
Well, not really. It it's, it's through the Montana State Library. The references are Montana Constitution, art eleven, writer privacy, art two, definitions of the Montana Code, public information requests. Public information request fees, that's Montana Code annotated. Written notice of denial. Montana Code two dash six dash one thousand and nine, it's right there.
This is Sissy again, Janet, your chairperson has made a notion and she has that right to do it.
Okay, I would like to hear from you people, the board. Do you want to table this or get this done today, because there's a lot of discussion going on. Do we need to go back and study it more or get, get it done? Your decisions.
Lisa is an attorney, and she has some things to say about it.
That's a good point, the new chairman or supporter.
So then I, I would like to have a motion to table this until next meeting.
I will make a motion to table the Shoto County Public Information Request Policy until the July meeting.
Second. Okay, um.
And do we vote?
Public comment, vote, let's just vote. Public comment, please. Okay, no public comment. All in favor of tabling the public records request policy, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, it will be tabled and it'll be, it'll be on next week's, next month's agenda, thank you. Any, any other new business? All right, one last thing, public comment items out on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board.
Can you remind people to say their names?
See, they see your names. Please see your names.
Hello, this is Sissy again, Miss Chair. Um, I just uh, have a couple of questions, and I know you can answer, and I respect that. I just need to know if there's some way you guys can tell me what Roberts Wurles that you're going with? Because there's a new edition, twelfth edition that has ten different revisements to it. And I, I would appreciate if you guys don't have a sidebar talking. Because it violates my constitutional right to hear what's going on in a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments, I adjourn this meeting at one. One forty-three? Thirty-three, thank you all, thank you all for coming, and I appreciate your time.